I'd like to call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Breierston?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here and there.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the party.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Leopold would come forward.
I'm going to read a very small portion of a prayer from the Bible tonight as part of my prayer, just make it my own, our own. Have mercy upon me, O God, according to your loving kindness, according unto the multitude of your tender mercies. Bloat out my transgressions. Wash me thoroughly from my iniquity and cleanse me from my sin, for I acknowledge my transgressions, and my sin is ever before me. Create in me a clean heart, O God, and renew a right spirit within me. Cast me not away from your presence, and please don't take your Holy Spirit from me. Restore unto me the joy of your salvation, and uphold me with your free spirit. The sacrifices of God are a broken spirit and a contrite heart, O God, you will not despise. Heavenly Father, you see what I'm sure is on all of our hearts tonight and what we're thinking about, Lord, the problems going on in the world and in our nation, and, Lord, thank you that there doesn't seem to be much going on in our community at this time, and we pray, Father, for your covering, your help, Lord. We come to you tonight, Lord, with a contrite heart, and ask for help, Lord. Help us that as few people as possible, Lord, in our community, in our city, Lord, in our state and in our nation and in the world would come down with this virus, we pray. We just ask for your mercy. Give our leaders wisdom, Lord, our local leaders, our state leaders, the world leaders, Lord, our federal leaders. Give us all wisdom and help with this, Father, we pray. And, Lord, all the rest of the things that we need help with as well, we ask for your grace and your help, and we thank you in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is agenda changes. We do have one change. We were to receive a special presentation from Sharon Durley from NIMAC regarding the electoral aggregation. She will not be joining us tonight, so we're going to remove that from the agenda. Do the commissioners have any other agenda changes? Mayor McKinney, do you have any changes to the agenda?
I do not.
I'm going to be touching base with you because, you know, want to make sure that you're following along. We're moving on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments?
I'd like to...
Oh, that's right. I beg your pardon.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the agenda as revised.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Breierston?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Now that we've gotten ourselves straightened out again, citizens' comments, are there any citizens' comments this evening?
There's nobody signed up for citizens' comments.
Is there anybody in our merry band of small audience tonight who would like to say anything? All right, well, thank you very much for attending. Move on to the consent agenda. Clerk?
Approval of minutes of regular meeting held on March 3, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. Approval of not-released of closed-session minutes of meeting held on March 3, 2020 at 7:46 p.m.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Breierston?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers, 134620 through 134725 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $654,417.67.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
One second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Breierston?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Number eight, consider passing a resolution as follows, maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under Illinois Highway Code, MFT funds for general maintenance program per Director Roberts, who will be substituted by Director and City Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the department heads to stay home tonight just out of precaution. If there's not a need for people to go out, you might as well encourage that. So they are on standby. If I can inform a friend, use a lamp on here. If there's any questions, you can get them a call, but hopefully it's a very smooth one. The resolution you have is required by IDOT for utilization of more fuel tax funds. At the last meeting, we approved the budget for fiscal year '21. The secondary part of that is to approve this resolution, basically for IDOT to approve the use of those funds as we budgeted. So this is just a resolution for road salt in the amount of $178,000, the taxi program $200,000, street light repairs $20,000, parkway trees $30,000, traffic signal maintenance[439.68][439.68]$5,000, and on the salt storage facility, roof repairment place for $40,000. A total of $473,000. That was included in the HEP budget that was approved at the last meeting. Staff request, Director Nabel's approving the IDOT resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Breierston?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Consider passing ordinances as follows, authorizing renewal of aggregation program for electrical load per Commissioner Fisher. I'm not going to read this entire letter on the program renewal. I think I'm just going to cover this first section, proposal. The city's current municipal aggregation program is due for renewal at its July term, and renewal program requires several months to implement, thus a contract would need to be signed by late March or early April. The COMEd rate will be reset June 1. Analysts anticipate the new rate to be 6.5 to 6.75 cents. That base rate varies by plus or minus one-half cent, meaning the COMEd rate may range from 6.0 to 7.25 over the next year. The lowest indicative bid received is 5.98 cents per kilowatt-hour, thus a small amount of saving for residents may be possible. The city has two options, renew the program with a fixed-rate contract, which would guarantee savings of $2 per year. Savings higher than that amount is possible, but it is not guaranteed. The other option is to renew the program to receive a civic contribution to the city without any restrictions as to its use, and select anywhere from 0 to 100% renewable energy at no additional cost, with residents' electric rate to match the COMEd rate exactly every month guaranteed. The options under this are no savings are achieved, but no risk of overpaying, guarantee the exact COMEd rate, the city receives a civic contribution which will be paid monthly. If we choose a 25% green energy for a slightly lower contribution, the City of Zion can be designated an EPA Green Power Partner Community. If choosing 0% green energy, the civic contribution is higher and no EPA designation is received. It retains the continuity of the program. The city may continue to seek bids in the future to determine if savings are available once again. And I think everyone has had a chance to review the video online that Clerk Spooner sent to us regarding the program. I would recommend, make a motion that we authorize the renewal, and we look at the green energy options at 25%, and then we'll work with Administrator Nabel on how to properly use that civic contribution. I believe there is a sheet everyone should have on the funding breakout for that civic contribution. So I will make that motion. Is there a second? Any discussion?
What's the advantage of the 25% green energy? What does that get us?
I think that what it does, it's, we're building, we're helping to build with the contribution to the renewable energy credit system. We're helping to build future production, which will benefit us in the future. I think that's a very worthy thing for us to do, and it's, as far as the difference in what we'll receive in the civic contributions, a very minor contribution back to the system. So I think it's really, it's a good social program, it's something good to do.
Is something that COMEd is pursuing, green energy?
Administrator?
Yeah, I could address that real quick. So there's, you know, this is where the presentation would have come in and probably addressed a lot of this, but I'll try to address it as best as possible. So COMEd can look at peaks and pieces of usage and things like that to see where they can purchase green energy and provide it to Zion residents based on city overall usage. They actually can get some profit from that because they can purchase it at a lower rate than they might be able to produce it for. So if we did participate, they would charge the same rate regardless. This says, we want to participate in this and say, you analyze our community, you look at where you can use green energy. It's a win for them, it's a win for us, but it's all handled through COMEd. We don't administer any of that. They look at patterns, they look at the electrical supply, and we're basically directing them how aggressive we want to be with them, pursuing that as an option.
Can they purchase the energy from residents that have solar panels or something like that?
That's between COME, I don't know, that's a COMEd business.
They always have purchased this energy.
I think they already do when those, if those homes are already paying, it's going back into the grid, they're getting credits on their bill. That's my understanding of how it works, is that that's essentially them buying it through a reduction of utility bills. That's where they're building their portfolio out of those sources, as well as wind farms and solar farms.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any questions, comments?
Mayor McKinney, do you have anything you want to add?
Mayor, are you there?
Can we check and see if we lost them?
I'm not here, okay.
Oh, okay. And this contract?
I don't have anything that will I pay.
Okay. Dave, this contract was the term on it? It's, is this a one-year or?
I believe it says a one-year.
Starting in July of 2020?
Yeah, the July.
Yes, I'll start, yeah.
The presentation said that it was a one-year, a one-year term.
And then we would review and see if we want to continue the aggregation program.
The only time we would agree to lock or live that under the other proposals were U-12, 24, 36 month rate.
So we're approving with the understanding that it's 25% at the one-year. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Breierston?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, Consider Zoning Docket 20Z4, requesting a special use permit to operate a ministerial training center as petitioned by Liberty Temple Zion, located at 2200 Sheridan Road, per Director Ianson. The planning and zoning commission recommends approval with conditions. Administrator Nabel?
Thank you, Dan. As you said, Liberty Temple Zion is seeking a special use permit, Section 122, there's a few more in the Zion Disciple Coke to operate a ministerial training center. It'll be a classroom setting of the average of 12 to 15 students. That's the reason why they need a special use permit for classroom use of that property. March 5, 2020, finding a zoning commission, they recommended to approve a special use permit with conditions that on weekends between the hours of 8:00 in the morning and noon, that they only use the five permitted parking spaces in front of the tenant space and the two parking spaces in the rear, just to kind of help control the downtown, the business core of the parking situation. They recommend approval of those conditions.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Period, none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Breierston?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item C, authorizing, approving and authorizing the issuance of a tax anticipation warrant in the amount of not to exceed $1 million in all steps necessary for the aforementioned, per the city attorney, Mr. Paselli.
Mr. Chairman, I can turn this over to the city administrator. I am here to answer any questions about the legalities of this and the passage of the ordinance, but I believe it's a financial matter and addressed by the city administrator. Because you all love hearing financial news, right? Sorry. So, for those that are familiar, tax anticipation warrants are essentially a borrowing mechanism. You know, cities have the ability to issue bonds, which we have done in the past, and we've actually done that in, we did that in early 2012 for operating expenses, pledging tax revenue streams for that, but you pay those bonds back over a 15-year period. Tax anticipation warrants is basically a shorter-term financial cash flow borrowing, where you're pledging basically the tax distributions we're going to begin later this year as collateral. And what happens is, what we're seeking here is a million dollars, not to exceed a million dollars, those tax distributions that come primarily in June and September will get escrowed into an account to pay that back, and then it's about 30% of the taxes overall, but those taxes go first to pay back the principal interest on these tax anticipation warrants. The reason we need this is primarily cash flow liquidity issues. What happens is, we do get our tax distributions in June and September, the majority of them. We always have a tight time from typically January till the next distributions, which are June. Well, now here we are mid-March, we've had some financial crunches, we've had a lot of overtime due to fire personnel leaving, we basically, we're looking at running out of cash before we can get to those June distributions. So timing of, you know, you look at your, you manage your bills at home and you go, okay, I got the electric on this day, I got my mortgage on this day, I need to have this much in this account at this time. What's happening is our expenses are coming in more, at different times than when our revenue is coming in. So we need to be able to bridge that gap. We're bridging as much of that as we can, looking at invoices and due dates and trying to hold off as long as we can on paying those invoices to allow sales taxing and taxes that enter to come in. Payroll is an every-two-week thing, that doesn't change. We can't really go to employees and say, we'll give you your next payroll, we have to do that now. So our expenses don't really fluctuate. We spend about, on average, $500,000 a week between payroll and our bills. Our current cash position will get us to about March 27. Then we have, we set aside about a million dollars as a cash reserve back in June in good interest rates, so we set it aside. We kind of said, okay, that doesn't exist, we don't see that, let's pretend it's not there. We started looking at the cash flow and went, okay, we're going to have to dip into that. When we dip in, when we need to dip into that was kind of my trigger to say, okay, this will buy us another two, three weeks of expenses, which will get us to about April 17. That's when we're looking at these going forward, closing, and getting the funds in to then carry us through with the money that comes in and the million dollars to those distributions in June for operational purposes. It's not a good situation to be in. It starts a, it can start a financial circle if you can't dig out of it, but we need to be able to bridge that gap operationally for cash flow purposes. So you have the terms in front of you, we have not to exceed 5%. Basically, this goes out to market, we're hoping that it comes in under that, but we didn't want to authorize up to 3%, and then somebody comes in at 3 and 1/4 and go, well, we can't close because we didn't have authorization. So the terms that are in here, not to exceed a million and not to exceed 5%, are basically upper limits. We still have to market this and see if there's people willing to purchase the tax anticipation warrants, and that's what this allows us to go forward in. If they're within the terms, then we can go ahead and close on those. If not, we'll have to revisit on how to make those, how to project.
I will make a motion to approve this authorization and issuance of tax anticipation warrants in the amount not to exceed $1 million. Second. Is there any discussion?
I've got some questions. So David, you said that we had some unanticipated expenses over time, the fire department, and perhaps other unanticipated expenses. Do you know about how much we're talking about in, you know, so we made our budget, and had we been able to follow that budget, would we be in this situation right now?
It probably wouldn't be as drastic. We knew that we had a significant deficit budget that was adopted. We might still be looking at the timing of cash coming in, but as far as the amount needed to borrow, we would probably be in that situation.
When are we looking to pay back these tax warrants?
So they, they, it's by the end of December, so basically follows the distribution cycle of tax distributions from the county. So they're going to take whatever percentage they need of each distribution until it's paid back. You're really looking at the majority of it being paid back by the end of September, but then there's still some smaller distributions that come in by December.
So we can't pay it back. When we get the tax revenue? Can we pay it back when we get the tax revenue? We pay it off early, I guess is what I'm saying.
I think you can pay it off early, but we still need some of those tax distributions to be able to operate as well. So if we, if we said, okay, we need to get to June, and then we get our tax distributions, but we said we're going to take all those tax distributions and pay it back, now we need to bridge till July or, you see what I'm saying? So we're trying to spread that out so we still have cash flow during the normal distribution season for our operations while also paying it back.
When is our next tax distribution coming to us?
The first one usually comes at the end of May, on May 24th. It's a pretty small amount. It's people that have to pay early on their property tax bills, but typically June, the first week, first and second week of June, actually the whole month of June is when you get your first big distributions. There's three or four usually in June.
Do you have a number in mind of what we'll need to bridge that gap between March, what did you say, 26?
Well, April 17th, after depleting the reserve.
All right.
That's what we need.
Are we going to tap into our reserve?
Yes, yes.
How much are we going to use from our reserve?
That, we would be using the full $900,000 to get from March 27th to April 17th.
So we're going to have to use all of our reserve plus the tax anticipation?
Correct.
So we're in trouble. I didn't know, yeah, okay.
I mean, we call it a cash reserve account, it wasn't, it was just money that we set aside because we had extra back in June. It was still planned that that was going to be used for operations, so it's not, it's not like it was money we had just sitting around. We just, we call it a cash reserve account because we didn't need it at the time, and we didn't want it just sitting there earning any interest. It was always part, that reserve was part of our budget that we passed, and then this is to bridge from further into the period.
So we can borrow up, these tax warrants are up to a million, we don't have to borrow a million?
That's, I mean, that's what I'm estimating that we need to get through to June. Now, remember, our reserves will get us to April 17th. I mean, our fiscal year end is April 30th. So budget-wise, we basically made it within a couple of weeks of our fiscal year end, but then we still have expenses in May, you know, the last couple of weeks, and then May before we get to the big distributions. That's why we need to basically upfront this of the month.
I guess I was under the impression originally that we had these reserves, we were not going to use them, instead we were going to buy tax warrants.
Oh, no, no, no. We were trying to push off doing this as long as possible by utilizing reserves. That, digging into the reserves, like I said, was my trigger to say, okay, we're going to need 30 days to issue and close this, those reserves that have a million dollars that is just a separate accounting is what's going to carry us. That's to bridge the gap until we can get these issued.
All right, well, that's a little clearer to me. Not any better, but a little clearer.
I understand.
In fact, actually worse. What types of cost-saving measures have we already employed that might be able to save us from buying these warrants?
Anything that we've already employed is reflected, I don't think there's anything we could do more to avoid this. Like we've entered into MLUs with memorandum of understanding with the police, or the fire department to allow us to go down to six per shift, so we're not filling an extra overtime shift every day. That's already saving us, but it's still, we're still having overtime shifts at a higher amount than we budgeted for. So it's not making it worse, it's saving us over the alternative, but it's still cost, it's still costless money. We're already bare bones as far as personnel and other expenses that we've implemented cost-saving measures. I would be for quoting this if there was another.
Yeah, well.
If I had another solution available for cost-saving measures.
If we approve these tax warrants and then start, I'm just throwing things out because I definitely don't want to go down this path. I think it's a dangerous path, and it will, it'll affect not only this budget year but the next budget year.
Absolutely.
And beyond that, do you think there's going to be an effect beyond the next budget year too?
Depends on what remedies we have to try and get out of.
So between now and April 17th, do you have any remedies you've proposed to council that would, that sort of wouldn't have to do this?
I do not. Any remedies that we have, again, we're looking at the stranded act for nuclear, we're looking at home rule potentially based on the census, we're looking at medical cannabis, but all of those items, even if they all pass today, you're looking at a significant time lag before you actually could see any revenues from that. I'm looking at those as our way to break the cycle, but not to prevent current issuance. So that's our way out that we're going to continue pursuing and keep pushing, but that doesn't help us now because the cash flow from those wouldn't be for a quarter year from now.
So if we do this and we come up with some solutions... So, if we do this and we come up with some solutions between now and June, let's say, because that's going to be the next profit income coming to us in June. So, we, we may have between now and June to think of some solutions. And then, we wouldn't have to utilize, if, if we approve to borrow up to a million dollars, we don't have to borrow a million dollars. We don't have to take these tax warrants.
We don't have to close on the deals. There's authority to go to market, give the close. We will be incurring legal costs with that, things of that nature, escrow costs and setting up the accounts relatively minimal. But we, you know, I, I think in two thousand twelve, we talked about tax anticipation warrants. This was before my time. And then, we ended up issuing bonds at that time, so we didn't close on the actual tax anticipation warrants at that time. I, and that might be a legal question on whether we, we don't have to close if we decide we don't want to close, but.
No, we do not need to. We do not need to. This is an authorization, like we talked about, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Mayor. But the authorization is there in effect in case we need to utilize it. And a contingency is that it's a warrant, and so much we need to find a partner to purchase these warrants. We need, so that's part of this process as well. So, this is the intention upon us entering into a contract where we enter into that. So, we need time and lead time to be able to get that set off. And that's part of the reason of the timing of this as well. So, to your question, no, we don't need to close on it, but this does give the authorization to close on tax anticipation warrants in an amount not to exceed one million dollars, varying interest rate from not to exceed five percent. And also, to that point on closing, I don't believe it'll go with five percent maybe a high interest rate, but quite frankly, I think it would be, it's better to go high on these things with parameters than to, as the administrator said, come back and say, we got three point oh one, but we're only off rest of three. And obviously, let's just be frank, the financial markets aren't somewhat of a crisis at this point. And the liquidity may not be there. If we went back in two weeks for this, we may have a different financial scheme than we have right now.
To your point, if somebody came in and donated a million dollars tomorrow, I would say we don't need to go forward with that, visualize.
If we were able to either save money through reducing our spending or something like that, or we had another stream of income, then we wouldn't have to take these tax warrants. Is the closing, is there a timing issue with the closing so that if, if we're able to close on it and then we find we actually do have a revenue stream coming in, we don't need them, once we close, that's it? Do we just pay them back right away? Or do we have to follow the, the cycle of the repayment? I read here January first, twenty twenty-one.
Well, the, the way that the tax, the taxes will go to escrow for the agreement. So, if we had a revenue stream where we had a million dollars savings, we would utilize that and then not need that taxes that you go to pay back. You know, if, if that were the case.
Well, thank you, David. I, I guess I, I misunderstood how we could use our, I didn't realize you were going to be using all of our reserve.
I answered the.
And then, we need the tax warrants. So, I guess that was a clarification for me. I still don't like it at all. Thanks. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Fireson had a question.
I just have one other question based on the timeline that you laid out. Sounds like we still have May to figure out, or did I miss that?
This would, this would be using, so April seventeenth, we basically run out on, we, that's where we get this million from. Then we look at our cash flow projections for what we bring in in sales tax. We have those fees from the landfill, replacement tax income taxes that's going to come in during that time period. Yes, we'll have, you know, a million and a half or two million dollars of expenses to pay over that next five weeks. But between this million and the other revenue streams that would normally come in, that will get us the first distribution.
Okay. That's the piece I was missing, the additional revenue. Thank you.
So, would there be any consideration for whoever would be purchasing these? Like, what kind of risk are we talking about?
There'll be consideration. I mean, the, the fact that we have a levy that's already passed and adopted that basically they get their hands on fully, it goes into an escrow agent, it doesn't even come into our hands, and they're, that's a guaranteed revenue stream for an underwriter, for somebody who's buying this versus income taxes, sales taxes, that's a little more, especially now with the markets, we don't know. We're going to take hits on sales tax and income tax because of what's going on, stores, restaurants, things of that nature. So, underwriters on sales tax collateral might go, ooh, we're, we're a little concerned about this. This is a property tax levy. It's a, for all intents and purposes, a guaranteed income stream that they have first lien on. A lot of those other factors don't come into play. There'll be some underwriting on it. There'd be some consideration of risk, but when you're looking at saying, hey, in six months, I know that the county, the city's adopted this, I know the county's in a sentimental right to me. You know, it's, it's pretty low risk for, for them. But as, as Lieutenant Sully said, financial markets are kind of very shy right now. So, we still have to go out to Sully's and see if there's a purchaser.
And I guess one other question that I think we talked about earlier, the five percent is the annualized rate. So, we're paying that back over a period of like six months, right? So, we need something less than that on an annualized rate.
Correct, yes. It's a current rate. And it may be less than five. It's, you have to get, sorry, I'm repeating myself, but we have to, we have to assume five. But it likely, it may be less than five. Let me just leave that. I'm not prognosticating, I can't guess the interest rate. But the interest rate is also, as you know, Commissioner, a reflection of the risk. And the higher the interest rate reflects a higher risk credit. And that's the basics of the interest rate.
Mayor McKinney, do you have any questions regarding this issue?
I do not.
Any further comment or discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Moving on to item ten A. Consider approval of intergovernmental agreement among the member agencies of the major crash assistance team, MCAT, Lake County, Illinois. Clerk Chief Henderson, Administrator Nabel, please.
Sure. This is an agreement we have with the major crash, crash assistance team. It's a multi-agency organization that basically does accident team investigations. We're basically able to take advantage of resources from, everyone contributes time and staff towards almost like a mutual aid sort of situation. Primarily on the major, major accidents, we have to do reconstruction, surveillance, larger crises. This intergovernmental agreement is basically just amending it for a use of what's called the drug recognition experts and the drone incident response team. It's anticipated, unfortunately, with the legalization of cannabis, that we may have more need for monitoring erratic driving or may have more fatalities as far as motor vehicles during, during kind of the adjustment period. So, they, they're expanding the use of these resources to allow drones and the drug recognition experts. So, we just need to amend the intergovernmental agreement to include that expansion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with MCAT.
Second?
Is there any discussion, any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item ten A. Consider approval of intergovernmental agreement among the member agencies of the major crash assistance team, MCAT, Lake County, Illinois. Clerk Chief Henderson, Administrator Nabel, please.
Sure. This is an agreement we have with the major crash, crash assistance team. It's a multi-agency organization that basically does accident team investigations. We're basically able to take advantage of resources from, everyone contributes time and staff towards almost like a mutual aid sort of situation. Primarily on the major, major accidents, we have to do reconstruction, surveillance, larger crises. This intergovernmental agreement is basically just amending it for a use of what's called the drug recognition experts and the drone incident response team. It's anticipated, unfortunately, with the legalization of cannabis, that we may have more need for monitoring erratic driving or may have more fatalities as far as motor vehicles during, during kind of the adjustment period. So, they, they're expanding the use of these resources to allow drones and the drug recognition experts. So, we just need to amend the intergovernmental agreement to include that expansion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with MCAT.
Second?
Is there any discussion, any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.